The City of Revere Zoning Board of Appeals. Public hearing calendar for May 27, 2015. Could we have a roll call, please?
Mr. Bacilli. Mr. Corin is absent. Mr. D'Angelo. Mr. Mazzoni. Mr. Colometto is absent. Mr. Tucker.
Present.
Quarterm is present.
Taking up 1504 first? We're taking up the third one first? 1504? Yeah. Just for the edification of the people here, there is a quorum. We have four people, but that will... What happens is, one denied vote will kill it. We normally have an alternate member. Unfortunately, he's not here tonight. So you do have the right to ask for a continuance. If you don't want a continuance, we go forward with the four members voting. Gennaso, yeah?
We'll take matters out of order. The first application is A 1505. This is the application of...
04.
Excuse me. A 1504. This is the application of David Massey, Dean D. LLC, 25 Arini Drive, Wakefield, requesting a maximum building coverage variance for a proposed two-family dwelling, two-unit condominium on Lot 42 and 43 at 43 Rosetti Street, Revere.
Okay. Speak directly into the microphone so that the public can hear it. That's great.
Mr. Chairman and honorable members, James Sipleletta, 385 Broadway, Revere. On behalf of David Massey, at this time, there being not a full board, we would request a continuance.
Okay. Is there a motion to offer a continuance? Motion made. Seconded?
Mr. Bacilli, to continue.
Yes.
Yes. Mr. Corin is absent. Mr. D'Angelo. Yes. Mr. Mazzoni. Yes. Mr. Colometto is absent. And Mr. Tucker.
Yes.
Yes. This matter is continued to the next meeting, probably the end of June.
Yeah, we'll give the date. Do you want to do it now? One second. June, the last Wednesday in June, the 24th? So our next meeting would be June 24th at 4:00 PM. Do we still go on with the public hearing?
Yes.
Okay. We still go on with the public hearing. So I'll be asking for proponents and opponents even because, even though it's being continued, we still have to have the public hearing where it was posted in the calendar. Okay. So councillor.
Point of information, I have a procedure being performed on the 24th of June. I'll be unable to attend.
But you can voice your opposition or voice your... Whatever. Proponents or opponents. But we also, we allow the councillor to come up and voice right away. We take the councillor first, so you can speak.
Mr. Chairman, members of the commission, I rise to the occasion to speak in opposition of a particular application based on concerns of numerous residents in the area. But their ultimate concern is not that they don't want that parcel of land developed. They certainly do. But what they would like is a compromise to the extent that a single-family home would in fact round out the area very nicely. Being mindful of the fact that the only way that this particular variance could be offered out would be to allow tandem parking. I've been lucky enough to be a city councillor for 27 years, and I've been before the Board of Appeals, and I've heard many pleas of concern through the city council. Tandem parking, in my opinion, after many, many years of service for the City of Revere, does not work. There's no one in the world that can tell me that a husband and wife parking their automobiles at some point in time will decide that this isn't working. I'll park one car here, and the husband will park in the street. So there again, in itself, that doesn't even take into being that in today's household, they have also three cars. What do we do with these two additional cars that are being placed upon the folks at Rosetti Street? Bearing in mind, they've already impacted severely by the May Institute, and they're being good neighbors about it because they know the good service that May Institute provides for its clients. They also have a auto body shop at the corner. All of this encompasses many, many vehicles infringing upon their properties, and their rights are a nice way of living. This is one that we all want to endure. So I ask this in a spirit of cooperation and fairness, that again, these individuals never come to me with concerns about many of the city problems. They only rise to the occasion when it's necessary, and when they feel their rights are being infringed upon. They rose to the occasion when development was going to be at the Sons of Italy. United, we stood together as a neighborhood and as elected people, and we didn't allow that because it wasn't a good use for the neighborhood. Again, we're saying, we want to be good neighbors to this developer and the people who own the property, but we certainly want to be good neighbors to ourselves and to the people who already live there and endure the pains that we have. And just for instance, this past year, Mr. Chairman, we experienced an awful winter where snow was more harmful than possible, and there wasn't any place to displace the snow. So if we didn't particularly have that lot per se, not that someone should provide a snow farm, it saved Rosetti Street somewhat because May Institute was snow plowing there, snow on a neighbor's property. And I had to take that into consideration and straighten that matter out. So they're really highly congested in a little small street, overwhelmed by traffic already. And I just ask this commission, see fit, so when this application comes before you on the 24th of June, that you deny that on the people's concerns. But also, my concern is going to be echoed by many of the area's neighbors who are here to also share their concerns with you, which probably have more value than what I had to add to it because they live there. So again, I thank you very much for taking me out of order. My grandson's doing something that I have to attend to, and I have to be there. So thank you for your indulgence. Thank you, commissioners.
We're going to go up and ask, is there any proponents? Anyone in favor?
Mr. Chairman, I understand that the commission voted to... that the board voted to continue the matter?
However, it's a public hearing. We have to listen to everyone in the audience because it's posted, so we have to take on anybody that's in the audience, proponents, opponents.
Well, I guess I'd object to the taking of any evidence, and here's why. If the matter is going to be reheard on the 24th of June, then there will be an additional member who doesn't have the benefit of what's being said today. That's one reason. The other is, if it's being continued through no fault of the applicant or no fault of anyone who came up here to voice an opinion for or against, then it should be continued until the 24th. That puts the applicant in another position where the case has been continued, yet we're being forced to go forward, and we're being forced to go forward with fewer than the number of members, although I respect all of the opinions and the wisdom of the sitting members as I do my friend councillor Gennaso, but I respectfully request that his testimony be stricken. This matter be continued from today's agenda, which could happen for any number of different reasons, and have it reset for the next hearing. Otherwise, we're going to be relitigating this thing on the 24th, and that, I don't think that's the intent of other purpose of the continuance. It's just like if you went to court and somebody's witness didn't show up, and the judge says, "Okay, I'm continuing this until next month," then the prosecution gets up and presents its case.
Let the clerk speak because we've been told that we have to take a public hearing, take the opponents and proponents. So should we have continued it? I'm not sure, but we'll figure this out.
Mr. Chairman, maybe the...
We have enough members here to vote, so we didn't have to offer the continuance.
That's correct, but I think we have the right to make our case in full.
Mr. Chairman, maybe the ZVA was a little bit premature in doing the continuance prior to the public hearing testimony. The statute does provide that any member who is not here for the public hearing can review the testimony from this evening's hearing, and that person would then be eligible to vote when the matter comes back before the board on June 24th. So the statute does allow a review of the testimony by anybody who is not here. So I think if the board wants to reverse its vote on the question of continuance and then just reopen the public hearing, you may do that.
We would still move for a continuance.
At the very end of the public hearing?
No, right now. Before the public... Before any evidence is taken. I think that's what the definition of a continuance is. There's continuing the hearing, which means put it on to a next agenda date, or that you extend the hearing, and we're not looking to extend it. We're looking to begin it on 24 June.
With all due respect to the attorney, the board's policy over the years has been to convene the public hearing. There is ample, there is a quorum here to do that, and take all the testimony necessary. And out of deference to the attorney at that time, they would continue it so at the time of the vote, there were sufficient members here to give the proponents adequate opportunity to prevail.
I understand that, and with all reference to the clerk of the appeals board, I've been here on days when the same announcement was made by the chair, and three or four of the cases on for hearing that night were just put on over to the next, you know, to the next agenda.
Never. We always open a public hearing. I'd like you to tell me what dates they were because we...
Mr. Chairman, you've got...
That doesn't state true.
No, yeah, it does. Yeah, because I've done it.
It's not true.
Well, you either want to continue it and grant that. We are moving for a continuance, and we're asking to be put on for the next hearing, which is the 24th of June.
You're going to pay for all the legal ads and everything to offer the continuance?
I guess we're going to have to. I guess we'll have to.
The policy has been that we take the public hearing, and then you can have the right to have it for a continuance for the vote because there's another member.
Do we then get the right to re-present our case on the 24th?
Of course.
So we're going to litigate this twice?
Yes.
It makes no sense. So I understand why you had to take the councillor first. So then if... Are you denying my right, my request for a continuance, or does it go to a vote?
After the public hearing, you could have the right to ask for a continuance.
I'm asking that the hearing not go forward, that it be continued until the 24th of June without the taking of evidence.
It's not our policy.
Well, you know, that's my...
Then we want to vote for that.
That's my request.
Okay, then we'll have a roll call. Before a public hearing takes place, he's asked to continue it. Is there a motion to... You can. You have the right to do that, so.
The motion has been made to rescind the board's vote to continue. Mr. Bacilli, yes. Mr. Corin is absent. Mr. D'Angelo, yes. Mr. Mazzoni, yes. Mr. Colometto is absent. Mr. Tucker, yes. The board has rescinded its vote to continue. Can proceed to the public hearing.
Please note my objection for the record. Mr. Chairman, again, James Sipleletta, 385 Broadway, Revere, on behalf of Mr. Massey. And this is, as shown on the plan, this is a lot that currently contains a one-family house which is proposed to be removed. We appeared before the site plan review committee. Site plan review committee went over the plans, the proposal made by Mr. Massey, and found it to be in compliance with a two-family townhouse with, in all respects, including parking, except for the maximum lot coverage of 30% within the RB district. That is the only exception that we're looking for today. We can appreciate the concerns of the councillors, the neighbors, all of those who are interested in this proposal, but from what the ordinary neighborhood concerns generally would be, would be traffic, parking, and congestion. The zoning code addresses all of these and addresses them in a way that the site plan review committee took into account and looked at the proposal and said that but for the fact that the percentage of lot coverage exceeds only that 30%, and it does not exceed it in a substantial way, and it in fact creates logical parking on both sides of the house, where you have a driveway that's 10 feet wide on each side, and one side 10 feet 2 inches on the right side, and goes back the entire length of the lot. Easily, there is room for two cars on each side and the possibility of a third car on each side. So with respect to those ordinary neighborhood concerns, I think that those have been allayed by the layout of the engineer and the architect. It is an RB zone, and the RB zone allows for two-family. It's a use that does not require a special permit. It's a matter of right, and the exception to the zoning code that we are asking for is de minimis at best. It's not going to impact the neighborhood. It's not going to change the character of the neighborhood. It will not create undue parking, undue pedestrian safety or concerns, will not increase vehicular traffic. The neighborhood is set up for one and two families. This is a two-family, and all of those other concerns have been adequately addressed. It's not conceivable, Mr. Chairman and honorable members, that the small encroachment beyond the 30% of the maximum lot coverage is a derogation of the purpose and intent of the bylaw. Many of the lots in not only this but other parts of the city have structures on them that exceed 30%. 30% is less than a third of the lot area. And if you look at this plan, the plan shows the house squarely in the middle of the lot. It has the appropriate setback in the front, has the appropriate setback in the rear with a rear yard, and fits very well and nicely within the lot lines. And for those reasons, Mr. Chairman, I would suggest that all of the conditions preceding to the allowance of a variance have been fulfilled, that all of the normal community, neighborhood, surrounding area concerns that are voiced and will be voiced and were voiced by the councillor have been taken into consideration by the site plan review committee, taken into consideration by the engineer and the architect, and have been dealt with. We don't need any... We do not require any other relief from all of those important factors. So I would ask the board sitting tonight and also the board that will be sitting on the 24th of June to take that into consideration. If there are any other things, and I will talk to councillor Gennaso and some of those concerned and find out...
Sir, just to cut you short, did you have a meeting with the councillor just as a normal practice? Was the... Did you meet with the ward councillor?
In this case, we were not able to. We did not have the time on the run-up to meet the...
So perhaps if you did, you wouldn't be here this evening with having this opposition from him?
Well, we may or may not, but we will take up his invitation to talk about addressing some of the concerns. And I understand there won't be a vote tonight unless I've misread...
Well, that's debatable now, that we rescinded the continuance, that you can ask again at the end of the public hearing.
So if the board is of the mind to accede to the wishes and the requests of the councillor, we're more than happy to sit down and talk to him about what ameliorations or concessions or compromises might be out there in the wind that can keep everybody happy.
Thank you.
But on the record, I think we're still entitled to the variance. Thank you.
Excuse me?
I said, on the record, I still think we're entitled to the variance. I think we've made the case for a variance and have, on the record, presented enough evidence in the way of the plan to qualify. But in the spirit that we've always proceeded under, we're always willing to speak with those who have voiced concerns or oppositions, especially if they're elected officials.
Okay. Are there any other proponents? Proponents in favor? Hearing not enclosed outside of the hearing. Opponents? Please keep to the facts. This isn't a city council meeting, so I'm not going to get into long dissertations. So please keep to your facts. You can get up and voice your re-opposition. State your name and address for the record.
John Accaragio, 30 Graves Road, Revere, former city councillor. I live on Graves, right around the corner. The lot is basically a postage lot, and what they're trying to do is put in two buildings, two structures. That's going, to me, is going to hurt the integrity of the neighborhood. This neighborhood is very close-knit, and it's all made up of one-family houses. The big issue here is parking, and we had a major parking issue this past winter. They had to park on Graves, and then you've got the body shop or you have the pier shop up the street. They're parking on Graves. There's not enough parking on the street. And the other issue is flooding. That whole street floods, and it flooded this winter, and then ended up to get... it freeze, and it ended up to be a ice gate and a rink. So that's important. And then the other thing is, you know, how many children are going to be coming in? I have nothing...
All right. That's not part of the zoning board of appeals, so you're getting offline, but try to stick to the facts here.
All right. The issue is public safety with the parking situation. Fire apparatus is trying to get down the street. The new apparatus now, myself being retired fire lieutenant, it's wider, it's bigger, and they need more room to get down streets. So that's another issue. So I'm supporting the neighborhood, and I'm opposed to the two buildings, but not a one-family house. If you want to put a one-family house like the other houses, fine. Thank you.
Okay. Just for the edification of the public, it's one structure split, so it's one building that they're proposing, a 40-by-40 structure, just for the edification of the public. It's on, and the plan was downstairs if anyone wanted to look at it.
Hi, I'm Carol Donovan. I live at 11 Graves Road. My property back garage faces the house that will be erected. I've lived here for over half a century, and I can tell you when there are cars in that house, when there are people living there, I inevitably have to knock on the door to tell people to move the car that's behind my garage because I can't make the swing when there's a car behind me. Now, there's never been more than one or two cars in that house. When you're talking about a two-family house, you're talking about four to six cars. They're all going to be lined up on Rosetti Street. I'm going to have to call Mr. Sipleletta or Mr. Massey or the police department to tow these cars because I can't get out of my garage when these cars lined up. The other issue we have is water, and it's been brought up. We have a catch basin right outside my property.
That's not part of the board of appeals, though. That could be a city councillor and the conservation commission.
Can I just mention, when this house is occupied, that water that's pumped out of there is more than the fire department could probably use. They don't have to pump now because there's nobody in there. It's abandoned. When that house is occupied, they have to reroute a stream that goes on that property. And my neighbors can tell you about it. We have water there constantly, Mrs. Romano especially, but it goes under that property because I was a kid, picking up grasshoppers on that street. So I know it does. I don't know how they're planning on rerouting that water, but in the past, it had gone into the street, creating the ice on the street, into this catch basin that sits up here where the street is down here. No water is going into the catch basin that way. I've told Donnie Goodwin, I've told the GPW, they have to fix it. They know it.
Okay, but that's not part of this hearing.
It's not part of it. But when you have that many people in that kind of dwelling, you're going to have these kind of issues coming up. And that's why we don't want that many people on that lot. It's a small lot. It's not going to house... What is a two-family? Six people? Eight people? 10 people? How many cars? The streets are dead-end. It's small.
Okay. I'm not... I'm trying to cut you short because you're going off to things that... We're the board of appeals. We're looking at the topography of the land, and there are four parking spaces on their plan. If you didn't look at it, you had... You were welcome to go downstairs.
I did look at it. There are four places in a spot that might have six.
That's part of the zoning that's in place now. They have the right to offer to do that. We can't stop that.
But you're going to repay it. You're going to have them build it. They're going to bring as many cars as they want.
But we can't stop that. We cannot stop that.
And you can't stop it. So can you appeal it?
Thank you. I'm just trying to make an edification for the public. There are some things that we can do, but we cannot tell them that they... There's front yard parking. They'd have to go for variance for that. Is there any other opponents? Anyone else in opposition? Would you like to do a... If people can't, don't want to get up, can take their name and address, and you can raise your hand, but okay?
Hi, I'm...
Could you just move the microphone near you so that they view in public?
My name is Antonella Rubino, and I live at 35 Rosetti Street. So my house is right next to that lot. And the problem we have with that is that it's... that that house is literally sinking because I've been in that house. That land is all water underneath. We have such a problem with that street with water. We have all fallen in the wintertime because it's all black ice coming from that house. We put... I put up with it for 22 years, okay? It's really, really bad. And as far as the parking goes, the original... I mean, it's a small street. The original place to park, you know?
Okay.
But the main issue is that, that water, because there's a brook there.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other opponents? Please state your name and address for the record so we can record it, please.
Sandra Sipone at 38 Prince Street in Revere. And my property abuts the back of the 43 Rosetti Street. And there is an underground artesian well and river that runs underneath my property. And it starts at the corner of Davis and Graves Road, and it runs underneath. And I have bubbling artesian wells coming up at the back of my property. And when that Rosetti Street property floods, it comes back into my property. And my husband and I have waited up to our knees in water from that property. My mother walked through the back of that property to pick up my son during the winter months, and she fell on the ice and cracked her head. She had to go to the hospital. So there is a definite problem there with flooding.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay.
Councillor?
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Robert J. Haas, Jr., 350 Revere Beach Boulevard. I don't appear to many of these meetings, as you know. The last time I was up here was pertaining to the Sons of Italy development they wanted to do there. People in the neighborhood are 100% against it. I'm against this here. If he wants to build by right, build a single-family home, so be it. To build and utilize more than 30%, I don't think that's fair. It's not fair to the residents of the neighborhood, and I would strongly recommend that you people reject this application because the longer we get involved with all of these zoning changes to make it easy for the contractors to build, it's putting the city in peril. So thank you for your attendance. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other opponents?
Catherine Romano, 45 Malden Street. My backyard opens onto Rosetti Street. I am opposed for several reasons. Parking, water problem, and the impact on the school system in the city. Now, let me go back to the parking and not... I don't want to have to repeat what these people said, but actually, the parking turns into a safety problem because of the fire trucks and the ambulance. The water problem is enormous. Several years ago, the city tried to attack that water problem, and as a matter of fact, I have photographs here of two cylinders that were placed there because they were going to go underground, which they did, under the storm drain that's right outside my backyard. It helped a little bit because before that, when there were rainstorms, and not severe rainstorms, but I remember looking from my bedroom window onto the big house of Antonella. She couldn't get out of her house. Cars that were parked there, water was up to the hubcaps. Really is a problem. There's water there now, and I want to show you these photos. Now, as far as the impact on the school system, I served for 45 years in the Revere Public Schools, beginning as a teacher and ending up as a principal.
Ma'am, the school system has nothing to do with zoning, so I have to cut you short, please.
All right, gentlemen. Now, here I do have the photos. I don't know if you want to see them for a second?
You're welcome to show us the photos.
What? Okay, right here. Okay, right here.
If you have anything further to say, you can still speak, or is that just it? The photos tell it all?
That's it.
Okay. And while they're looking at the photos, I'd ask if there's any other opponent? Any other opponents? Please state your name and address for the record, and then you can speak.
Patricia Capasella.
Could you just, you can push that, there you go.
Patricia Capasella, 19 Rosetti Street, Revere. And I am also speaking on behalf of my son and daughter who own 25 Rosetti Street. I have lived there for 32 years. We are the busiest dead-end street in Revere. We have problems with traffic, but with water. We have a very high water level, which is bothering all of the houses. Why I know this is the previous owner of 25 Rosetti Street, when he was having water problems, tried to put in stones in the backyard to help his yard, which diverted the springs over to my yard, which I am now having to take care of the problem. I am against putting a two-family or a condominium if they would like to go along with the rest of the homes, a one-family. I am in favor of that. But anything else, I am not in favor of.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Is there any other opponents? Hearing none? I'll close that side of the hearing. If you're opposed, please step up to the microphone because we have a long agenda tonight.
I appreciate your taking my remarks. My name is James Piazza. I owned the lots 16 and 17 on Rosetti Street across from the proposed building. I'd like to say that I agree with all of the opponents and all of the arguments that they have presented. I just want to be on the record for that. But I do want to frame a different question. I think the argument in favor of a variance is fairly weak, especially in the face of the opposition of the neighborhood. If they can explain a hardship in terms of why they can't comply with the 30%, I'd like to hear it. Thank you.
Okay. Is there any other opponents? Hearing none? I'll close that side of the hearing. Councillor, would you like to just address that question if you don't mind?
Yes, sir. At this time, we've heard what the representatives who represent these good people in the neighborhood have had to say. We've heard what they have to say. We know the board's concerns. We know that, I can see that you're taking in all of this information as we are and being very deliberative about it, and at this time, we would request leave to withdraw without prejudice, go back to the drawing board, see what else we can do.
Okay, you don't want to ask for a continuance this evening?
I do not want to ask. No, I'd rather, I think that, as I think, I've always done when we've come up here, and I said, "I'll never bring you junk." And if there are people behind me who are in the audience and who are neighbors who think this is a proposal that's not worthy of being considered and granted by the board, then I would request that, I think it's appropriate to relieve the board of that burden and ask that we just be allowed to withdraw it. Talk to the councillor, talk to the neighbors, and see what we can come up with. Mr. Massey owns the land. You know, he'll develop it, but he wants to develop it in a way that's in compliance and makes everybody happy.
Thank you. There's a motion on the floor to withdraw without prejudice. Motion seconded? Roll call.
Question now comes to, on the motion to leave to withdraw without prejudice. Mr. Bichilli? Yes. Mr. Corin is absent. Mr. D'Angelo?
Yes.
Yes. Mr. Mazzone?
Yes.
Yes. Mr. Colometto is absent. Mr. Tucker?
Yes.
Yes. This matter is withdrawn without prejudice.
The further expla, there's, where they withdraw without prejudice, I don't think he's going to offer you an explanation for the hardship. He'll deal with the ward councillor, and hopefully, the ward councillor can probably set up a meeting or meeting of the minds to try to appease this, okay? A lot that was said tonight is not part of the Board of Appeals. I want to make that very clear.
They don't...
They do not have to come back on June 24th. Thank you. The next calendar item number, we'll start right from 1502.
The next application before the board is application A1502. This is the application of Antilon Arias 104 Randall Road, Revere, requesting a rear yard setback variance to enable the appellant to construct a two-family, two-story addition in the rear yard on Land Court Lot 12401A at 47 Liberty Avenue, Revere.
Hi.
Hi. Please state your name and address for the record.
Roger Rivera, the construction supervisor, and also the designer for the project.
Okay. Could you push the microphone? You have to speak right into it, I'm sorry.
This is Roger Rivera, construction supervisor, and also the designer for the project.
Is the applicant here?
Yes, this is the...
Okay. Is he represented by legal counsel or no?
He's not.
Okay. So you're, you're going to speak on his behalf?
Yes, I am.
Okay. Then you're welcome to go ahead.
Mr. Arias bought the property with a rough condition, and his intention was to do the remodeling. During the remodeling, we discovered that the rear part of the house had an addition that was poorly built. During the discovery, based on our experience, we were trying to save as much material we could, and at the end, it wasn't even worth it, so we tore it down, built the addition, well, they built the addition thinking that it would be fine with that. During the construction part of it, they decided to add another floor to it, and they got a stop work order based on the setback of the property. So we're just requesting for that to be allowed, and the whole idea of that would be just to have an extra bedroom on this particular house since the square footage in the house is small.
Okay. So just so that I'm, I can clarify for the audience and the members, this, a cease and desist was put on this construction?
No, they, they just put a stop work order because they felt that the setback on the back of the property wasn't sufficient. So we were then asked to get a plot plan and then go in front of the board to show them the setback requirement.
Okay. All righty. Are there any, well, the ward councillor is here, so you may step back, and then we have, as a courtesy, we have the ward councillor speak first. Good evening.
Chairman. Good evening. Charles Patch, Ward 6, Councillor, 44 Johnny Road, Revere, Mass. I'm well aware of this property. It's in my watch.
Could you move the microphone over just so that the viewing public?
This was a vacant house that I had several problems with before it was, it was bought from the bank, from these people. They actually, I was kind of happy when it got bought because there's nothing good with a vacant house. Nothing, nothing can be good with a vacant house. But I got a phone call in February from several neighbors that they put a big addition in the back of their house. So I went, I, I took a look, got in touch with Benny, the building inspector, and asked if there was permits that were pulled for the addition. And Benny, he checked, and they only did permits for remodeling the kitchen and bathroom and no permit for addition. So, and now that's, in February, Richard Dix, building inspector, ordered a cease and desist, working without a permit, and gave him a $250 fine. And then on February 27th, he got another violation, $250 fine, another cease and desist. And it's been that way ever since February. It's still, the sign's still on the door. So to me, it seems that, that he, if he had any plans of putting on an addition, he should have got a permit when he got the original permits. Also, it's, it's very close to the property line. It's only 14 feet from the back of the fence from Grandview Ave. It's, the addition's actually the same size, almost the same size of the house. So I just hope that you, I don't see any way that a variance should be issued. I don't, I personally, I think that it should be taken down. It's, it wasn't put up with a permit, and so I don't see how to get a variance. Maybe you know more about that law than I do, but, so I'm here speaking with several of the neighbors that, I, there's a couple in the audience here tonight, but they may not want to speak. So they asked me to do it. So thank you for your time, and that's all I have. Thank you.
Okay. Are there any...
Any questions? I got all these up there, if you want.
No, we know about the, we know about those. That's why I asked the question originally. Are there any proponents, anyone in favor? Hearing none, I'll close that side of the hearing. Any opponents? Anyone opposed? Councillor, you stated that there were two people that opposed to you. We'll have to have their names and address for the record. If you don't, if you can provide that to, if you can just provide that to him, to John, so that he can make it as a part of the records. But you can give their, if they, if they spoke to you, you can provide their information to him, and, okay? Are there any, now, are there any other opponents? Hearing none? I'll close that side of the hearing. Any members wish to speak? I do have a question for the, if you're representing the owner, if you could step up to the microphone? Looking at the plans, that's why I asked if there was a cease and desist. The structure is already on the property without a variance. Am I correct to state that?
Yes.
Okay. And you're asking, the structure, it's 14.6 feet from the back of the property line? Am I correct to state that?
Yes.
And that's correct, right?
It is.
Okay. That was my question, just to make sure that I was clarified here and...
But I want to also mention that we did not...
Can you push the microphone over so we can hear you?
I just wanted to mention that we did not build it intentionally. There was already a structure there, except we just built the second floor to this existing addition on the back.
So you're stating that the, you did not go farther back than what was the previous structure?
Exactly. This is the old house, original house. This is the pictures from the original house.
Do you have the plan for the original, for the original structure?
I don't have the plans for the original structure, but we do have pictures of it when we first bought the property.
Okay, thank you.
One more thing, please. Mr. Tucker, I'm sorry. There is a card from the Census Office that demonstrates the addition on the back that was already there. This is prior for him, to him buying the property.
Yeah, but it doesn't tell us the property lines. That's why I was questioning if it went back 14.6 feet. I don't think it did. I thought you extended beyond the, the structure.
It's the same foundation, all of this, because it was in bad shape. It was torn down and rebuilt the same, same size.
But you took the foundation that was there down?
No, not the foundation, no.
So you, the, the foundation that's on the property now is existing foundation, no modifications made to it?
What's that?
What about the Census? You have a job.
Okay, thank you. Councillor?
Are they stating that that foundation was there before?
Yes, they're saying that they did not modify the foundation, so that the distance for the house didn't change, they only added above. They only went up, they didn't go out any farther.
Well, I can't state for, for a fact, but I, I, it looks like a red new foundation for me. Maybe you could give an opinion via the building department. But does it show it on old plans? Also, the resident that lives behind claims that...
Any addition would have required a variance.
Any what?
Any addition on that second story would have required a variance because even the existing footprint was...
Mm-hmm. Okay, so we're going basically from the second floor addition is what we're voting on?
Right.
Okay. All righty, thank you. Does any other members wish to question anything?
Was there ever a, on that part of the house that was supposedly existing, was there ever a permit pulled to do it whenever it happened 20 years ago? Is there anything in the jacket down in the building department? Because I just think the whole thing was built illegally from God knows how long ago.
They have it on the, the plan, on the property listing. But the thing that we're looking at is that the second-story addition was done without any variance or without any permits, per se. And the ward councillor and other people are opposed to having the addition put on this home. Is that correct, councillor? That you're opposed to having the addition on the home? Perhaps we can ask for a clarification from the building department to have Benny go down there and look at it and see.
Their building is on the list, but there was nothing there.
It's a second story, correct?
They're into the 34th setback.
They're into the setback, okay.
For most of this addition.
Okay. All righty, so no further questions? Okay, then we'll go on to the next calendar item, and we take a vote at the end.
The next item before the board is application A1505. This is the application of Michael and Louis Calaruso, 182 Pearl Avenue, Revere, requesting a maximum number of stories variance to enable the appellant to construct a third story on an existing two-family dwelling on Lot 167 at 182 Pearl Avenue, Revere.
Mr. Chairman, members, James Sipoletta, 385 Broadway, on behalf of Michael Calaruso, Calaruso. To the application, there should have been appended, and I think there may have been, but if not, I'll hand up my copies. if not, I'll hand up my copies, of some elevations and some photographs which show the street scene and the scale of the neighborhood and the houses and the topography on Pearl Ave. So, ah, yes, thank you, Judge. So, this is, uh, this is Michael's application to, um, add additional living space at his house at 182 Pearl Avenue. As those who are familiar with Pearl Avenue, it has a very steep upside on the odd numbers in a very...
Are you, you're using the wrong address?
It's, it's, it's... A1505. Okay. We took, we, we went, I skipped, okay, we skipped one, that's why I'm saying, all right.
You actually had me fooled, because I used to live in old house directly across the street, so it's, um, it was a little confusing. But no, it is, uh, 182 Pearl Ave. So, the odd numbered side has a very steep hill. If I remember, there are 27 steps to get to the, to the flat ground on the upside of Pearl Avenue, and it's probably 80 feet up over the, uh, the houses that are down on the lower level that are adjacent to, um, the Beachmont Yacht Club. So if you can take that as the, the scale of, of what the properties, um, on Pearl Avenue are, then we, we can kind of put that into, into context. So with regard to 182 Pearl Avenue, it's a very, very steep drop down toward Belle Isle Inlet. So, as you see the front elevation, which is appended to the application, it looks like a very squat, maybe one-level home. And for all practical purposes, it is from the entryway that's on the sidewalk on Pearl Avenue. Where we get into the, the measurements and, and the half-story versus full-story dichotomy is when you look at it from the back, and there are no neighbors to the back. It, it views out over Belle Isle Marsh, out of a Belle Isle inlet and the old Suffolk Downs Drive-In, which is now the, uh, DE, um...
DCR.
DCR, thank you. Uh, the DCR Conservation Area. So there's nobody out back. What he simply wants to do, without violating any of the height restrictions, is to, is to just flip that roof line up. So from the, from the street side, it's actually going to be just two stories. From the rear, measure, measuring from the, the very bottom of the, of the hill, it would be three stories. But it's three stories in an area which really doesn't count in terms of interfering with the, uh, with the streetscape, with what's around it. It's not going to be any higher than any, any of the buildings there. It's, um, the neighbors on the left and right, both are higher. Obviously, the ones across the street are, um, infinitely higher than, than what Mike is proposing to do. And it's all within scale. The plot plan shows that in the back of the house, there's a garage, and there's a large yard that's paved, that's, he's not adding any more people, so parking's not a problem, it's not an issue. He, he's only adding living space. So with all the other dimensions taken into account, this is a very, almost minuscule, de minimis, uh, increase in the interior living, uh, space that has no impact on the neighborhood, no impact on the streetscape, the curb view, or any of the, uh, the functions or the utilities on, uh, on Pearl Avenue. Simply, simply giving him a little more height, uh, on the, on the top level and staying within the, uh, even measured from the bottom, the rear yard, he's still going to be within the 35 feet of height. If, if there was ever a hardship topography, uh, example that you could point out in the city, certainly the lower end of Pearl Avenue, indeed, the upper end of Pearl Avenue would be, um, would be demonstrative of that. So if there are any questions from, uh, the Chair or, or any of the Board members, I'd be happy to answer them. Mike's here as well. He's, uh, as a young man, he bought that property, he's raised his family there, he's living there, he wants to stay there in Beachmont, it's a wonderful place, he gets along with his neighbors, some of whom are here to speak in favor as well.
I do have a simple question. This is going to stay as a two-family?
Yes, nothing, nothing's added, no people...
Just added bedrooms, that's it?
That's it, indeed.
Okay, we'll continue on with the proponents, and then we'll ask questions.
Thank you.
Are there any proponents? Anyone in favor? Just before he speaks, now we have a ward counselor for there. Was the ward counselor spoken to, or is that because you were doing this before she was elected, or?
Yeah, I was...
Okay.
Yeah, I think the election was the 19th, and we had filed somehow.
Right. I just wanted, just for the edification of the public, I don't want them to say you didn't, you did speak to way back when, I, okay.
My name is Stephen Patty. I live at 188 Pearl Ave. I bought the property that's going to be renovated. I have no objections. It's not going to affect the neighborhood. If anything, it'll beautify it. So, as far as I'm concerned, it's...
And you're to the left or the right?
I'm to the right.
Okay, okay.
Yeah, so, like I say, I have no problems. Since he bought the property, there has been improvements made, as well as my property, as well as my property. So, I have no objections. If anything, the, it will improve the neighborhood.
Okay.
All righty.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Are there any other proponents? Hearing none, I'll close that side of the hearing. Any opponents? Any opponents? Hearing none, I'll close that side of the hearing. Any members wish to speak? I have a question, and it's just for the way that I'm looking at the plan. The side yard, did you have to extend by the driveway? We have proposed driveway going down, because it, it's hard to read the plan. So there was nothing put...
Nothing thrown out.
No stairs or anything? Do you know what the width of the driveway is, because it's not on here, coming, going in back?
No.
Because you have the garage in back, so you have parking, there's not a big parking issue there?
No.
Right, I just wanted to put that for the viewing public, just because I did look at the topography, and it is a...
12.2 to the center, and they, they share, um, the Milton's, uh, who are but on the left, they have an equal, um, access there as well.
Just wanted to make it for the viewing public.
Indeed, thank you.
Will there be any, um, plumbing or anything on the upper story? A small bathroom, that's, that's it? No kitchen, no, so we can restrict that there'll be no kitchen or anything up there, just a small bathroom?
No.
Okay. All righty, thank you. So that would be the only restriction. What do we put, no kitchen? Okay, we have another calendar item number?
The next application before the board is application A1503. This is the application of Charles and Patricia Braid, 31 Harrington Avenue Revere, requesting minimum lot area, minimum lot frontage, and minimum side yard variance for an existing dwelling on lot five at 31 Harrington Avenue, as well as a side yard variance for the proposed dwelling on lot six Harrington Avenue Revere.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, good afternoon again, Jim Sipoleta, 385 Broadway Revere. Initially, we filed this, uh, application on behalf of Chuck and Patty Braid, uh, to construct a house adjacent to theirs on the vacant lot to accommodate, uh, living, uh, facilities for Patty's, um, parents. Having been here once before and, uh, now revisiting the board, and having spoken with the, uh, ward counselor, uh, there may be another way to do this. And we're looking at perhaps, um, accommodating Patty's parents, um, within the home that Chuck and Patty reside, therefore obviating the need for their own home to be, to be constructed there. And we're cognizant that although, you know, these, uh, good people are getting on in age, they do require some level of privacy, and also cognizant that we're not allowed to, to have two families down there. It, it's Chuck and Patty's plan, after speaking with Counselor Powers and some of the others, to try to accommodate them within their own home, uh, without building an additional apartment, thereby, um, effectively obviating the need for this variance. And based on that and the conversations I've had with the counselor and some others, uh, I would respectfully request that we be allowed to withdraw without prejudice and, uh, go about this in a different way.
Okay, there is a request for withdrawal without prejudice. Is there any motion to withdraw without prejudice? Do we, we should be, we should continue with the public hearing before we make the, 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 the motion. Okay. Counselor, would you like to speak?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. John Powers, 46th and Apontis Street, this city. Uh, I'm, I was particularly concerned over this because it was several years ago, uh, as a city councilor, that I arranged to have the, uh, zoning changed down there, so that the, you now require 6,000 square feet to constitute a buildable lot. Also, uh, in the Point of Pines and the Grove section of Oak Island, you can no longer build a two-family house. There is no such thing as a special permit before the city council, and I think that's working very well for the city at this point here. And, uh, I thank the, uh, attorney for withdrawing and the, uh, proponent of the project, and, uh, I hope this will be, uh, the end of it. Thank you.
Okay. Continuing on with the public hearing, we'll ask, are there any proponents? Hearing none, I'll close that side of the hearing. Keep in mind that, that they did ask to withdraw without prejudice, but we, uh, continue with the public hearing just for the formality.
My name's Susan Blanchard. I reside at 38 Harrington Avenue in Revere. Uh, I'm also here representing my husband, Roger Fielding. Um, we would have been in opposition of the variance. I also appreciate the withdrawal, um, for Charles and Patricia, Patricia Braid regarding lot six on Harrington Avenue. Um, my opposition would have been legal in nature, um, because we actually, we think the Braids are great people, they're good neighbors, they keep the property nice, and the house is actually for sale, and we're actually kind of disappointed about that because we think they're really good neighbors. So this has nothing to do with any kind of neighborly thing, we think they're great people. So you're aware of what the, uh, variance, uh, request is, and, uh, so I wanted to state that the proposed, also the proposed side yard for what would have been the new dwelling on the west side of the house was only going to be 11.5 feet, with the minimum requirement being 20. So there really was a fourth item that was another variance. Um, the, the opposition that I, I cite the case of John Mitchell versus the Board of Appeals of Revere, and I don't know if folks are familiar with that case, but back in 1989, a very similar case on a lot size that was too small, uh, the zoning board approved a variance to build a house on the lot, and the neighbors took that to the Court of Appeals of the State of Massachusetts, and actually, the Court of Appeals of the State of Massachusetts struck down the decision made by the board here in Revere, because, uh, according to Massachusetts General Laws, Chapter 40A, Section 10, um, the city of, the, the local ordinance board cannot provide a variance because the lot size is too small. So, the whole request, it, my, my request to come here today, and I wrote four pages today, so I'm hoping my boss doesn't ask what I did today, but this is what I did today, um, is based on that. And, um, my other question would be, is if they really don't intend to stay in the neighborhood, and there's a for-sale sign on the house, I would be hoping that the, the board would not approve a variance for somebody who doesn't want to stay in the neighborhood. But I'm delighted to think that they might want to stay in the neighborhood, and I'll be happy to review whatever plans, and, um, I just want to thank you very much.
Thank you.
My name is Linda Rosa. I live at 34 Harrington Ave. I'm opposing this particular application. I'm sorry, I didn't hear what the hardship was. I didn't, there was a hardship attached to this? I didn't hear what that was. Because usually hardships go with variance, although we're not going to discuss that because we continued it...
The withdrawing, but...
Okay.
It's not a continuance, they're asking to withdraw without prejudice.
Okay, sorry about, I stand corrected. But what, what happens here in a case like this, if this lot, if this lot is subdivided, it's now, it's, it's in a non-conforming use, it's a very, very, very congested area. It's also an area that a few years back, as the learned counselor from our ward discussed earlier, that a full body of the city council voted to put 6,000 square feet of property in this particular area. For the reasons being, probably, that there are a lot of very small lots like this, and even less than this. So it does make things very congested, because even if there's off-street parking, there's still water levels that are very high there, we have traffic situations, a whole bunch of things that really don't apply to this. But if something is added there, there's probably, there are three houses right now on the street that can maybe accommodate what they're looking for. And that's just a suggestion, because again, it's owned for one family. I'm here in opposition. I would like to see it stay one family in, in this particular area. I would also like to see it stay 6,000 square feet in this particular area, and I would also like that this honorable board, if in fact, when this does come back, that you vote in opposition, because I will also be here again, if need be. And I just want to thank the Chair and this honorable body for taking the time to acknowledge this. Thank you again.
Thank you. Are there any other opponents?
Joanne Levan, uh, 21 Harrington Avenue. I am the bother to the Braids that were there, and, uh, I just feel that if that went through, it would impact my whole life, because I would lose my view, I would lose my privacy. They do not have enough land there. They have a garage there, and a, and a pool, and it takes that, but they only want to build towards my house, and not to give up anything there. That was my opposition.
Okay, thank you. Any other opponents? Hearing none, I'll close that side of the hearing. If you want to get up, get up right away, because...
Uh, I don't live in the area, but I am familiar with...
State your name and address for the record.
John Accareglio, 30 Grey's Road, Revere. I do support the neighborhood. The Pines is a unique area, it's a nice area of the city. Uh, the people just want to keep it, uh, one-family home, uh, be, uh, aesthetic to the, to the entire area down there. And again, parking could be an issue, uh, I'm not sure, but, uh, the Pines is a congested area, and I support the neighborhood with, uh, one-family house. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Any other opponents? Hearing none, I'll close that side of the hearing. Any members wish to speak? So we have a, we'll do our votes, and then...
First application before the board is Antolin Arias, 109 Randall Road, relative to 47 Liberty Avenue Revere.
Are you, uh... Counselor, are you going to request a continuance on this? You didn't say anything. I think you want to jump up. You'll say...
This is Arias.
Oh.
Oh.
Who is this? Oh, that's you? I'm sorry. You, with these, we bounced around, we're bouncing around these things here. Are you going to, he's just stated, you can ask for a continuance, or do you want us to go forward with this?
We would like to keep the addition at possible.
Okay, then we're going forward.
Question now comes on granting the relief requested by Mr. Arias, relative to 47 Liberty Avenue. Mr. Bacilli?
No.
No. Mr. Corin is absent. Mr. D'Angelo?
No.
No. Mr. Mizony?
No.
No. Mr. Colometto is absent. Mr. Tucker?
No.
No, this is denied.
Okay, you get a formal letter in the mail.
Um, can we at least keep the...
You have to speak to the, to the building inspector.
Okay.
The next application before the board is Charles and Patricia Braid.
And that's, you request...
This is a request, leave to withdraw without prejudice.
Yes, sir.
This is a request, leave to withdraw without prejudice on the Harrington Avenue property. Mr. Bacilli? Yes. Mr. Corin is absent. Mr. D'Angelo?
Yes.
Yes. Mr. Mizony?
Yes.
Yes. Mr. Colometto is absent. Mr. Tucker?
Yes.
Yes. This is leave to withdraw without prejudice granted.
Thank you.
Next calendar item.
The next application before the board is A1505, Michael and Louis Coloruso, 182 Pearl Avenue, requesting an additional story at, uh, 182 Pearl Avenue. Pearl Avenue requesting an additional story at 182 Pearl Avenue. They wish to continue or go forward?
Are we doing, we're not doing calendar item 1504?
We are granted leave to withdraw without prejudice.
We are, so that's all, that's all, we, then we rescinded that?
Excuse me? Yes, you're correct.
So we have to vote on that again?
Uh, let's see, where are we? This is A1504. No, we granted leave to withdraw without prejudice.
Then the second time?
Yes.
No, because we rescinded it and then...
We rescinded, then we went back to it.
All right, so that's all, that's all set then?
Yep. Uh, this is A1505.
We're on the last one, which is 182 Pearl...
Coloroso.
Coloroso.
We're content to go forward, Mr. Chairman.
Wish to go forward with a vote? Question comes on granting the relief requested by the appellant on Pearl Avenue requesting an additional story. Mr. Bacilli? Yes. Mr. Corin is absent. Mr. DeAngelo?
Yes.
Mr. Mizony?
Yes.
Yes. Mr. Colometto is absent. Mr. Tucker?
Yes.
Yes, this is granted. No further business.
No further business. Our next meeting will be June 24th.
Thank you, guys.